Twilight whispers through the pain. A quiet echo, soft as rain. Your memory, a gentle hum. Before the coming of the sun. Still vivid in my mind's embrace. A tender smile, a fading trace. Oh, the lavender lullaby woven from a time gone by. A melody, a sweet refrain whispering your name again. And every star guiding light. You bloom eternally in night. The scent of jasmine fills the air. Recalling moments we would share. A gentle touch, a knowing glance. Lost in a quiet, timeless dance. The laughter lingers in the breeze. Among the rustling autumn trees. Oh, the lavender lullaby woven from a time gone by. A melody, a sweet refrain whispering your name again. And every star guiding light. You bloom eternally in night. Though seasons turn and years may fly. This longing never says goodbye. A silent prayer, a hopeful plea. To guard the space you left in me. A gentle ache, a sweet embrace. I find you in this hallowed space. Oh, the lavender lullaby woven from a time gone by. A melody, a sweet refrain whispering your name again. And every star guiding light. You bloom eternally in night. Forever etched a tender dream. A timeless cherished quiet stream. My lavender lullaby.
Woke up to the sun, a lazy Sunday haze. Found a dusty old photo, lost in time's soft maze. A smile just like sunshine, a moment light and free. A little hum from yesterday whispering to me. No sorrow in this longing, just a cozy warm embrace. Each memory a sparkle finds its perfect happy place. Oh, these echoes in my pocket, they're my secret little tune. Reminders of the laughter underneath the fading moon. They don't weigh me down, no, they lift me to the sky. My golden hour reminders where dreams can softly fly. Hear the old street sounds, a distant happy sigh. A familiar melody that floats on breezes by. Like a quirky little treasure tucked inside my mind. The comfort of the past so beautifully entwined. No sorrow in this longing, just a cozy warm embrace. Each memory a sparkle finds its perfect happy place. Oh, these echoes in my pocket, they're my secret little tune. Reminders of the laughter underneath the fading moon. They don't weigh me down, no, they lift me to the sky. My golden hour reminders where dreams can softly fly. Maybe paths diverge and seasons come and go. But the warmth of what we cherished helps my spirit brightly glow. A quirky kind of magic in every shared delight. Turning shades of yesterday into tomorrow's light. Oh, these echoes in my pocket, they're my secret little tune. Reminders of the laughter underneath the fading moon. They don't weigh me down, no, they lift me to the sky. My golden hour reminders where dreams can softly fly. Yeah, they lift me up to the sky. My golden hour reminders. Bye bye.
Streetlights bleed through windowpanes, a soft glow. Dust moods dance in twilight's slow, easy flow. I trace the lines of photos faded and old. Stories whispered brave and beautifully told. A melody drifts a distant sweet refrain. Washing over me like summer's first rain. The air grows heavy thick with what used to be. A phantom touch, a haunting memory. Oh, in the flowery breeze where moments softly sleep. In the quiet corner secrets I still keep. A silent symphony where echoes intertwine. Of your presence endlessly forever mine. This low fly lullaby, a comfort and a sigh. Beneath the starlit canvas of a fading sky. The scent of petricker after a long, dry day. Brings back the laughter chasing shadows away. I hear your voice in the rustle of the leaves. A gentle murmur, my heart truly believes. Time flows like honey, slow and bittersweet. Each memory a rhythm so perfectly complete. The air grows heavy thick with what used to be. A phantom touch, a haunting memory. Oh, in the flowery breeze where moments softly sleep. In the quiet corner secrets I still keep. A silent symphony where echoes intertwine. Of your presence endlessly forever mine. This low fly lullaby, a comfort and a sigh. Beneath the starlit canvas of a fading sky. Maybe in dreams we walk those pathways once again. Beyond the sorrow transcending earthly pain. Just for a moment, the distance fades to light. Holding on to fragments shining ever so bright. Oh, in the flowery breeze where moments softly sleep. In the quiet corner secrets I still keep. A silent symphony where echoes intertwine. Of your presence endlessly forever mine. This low fly lullaby, a comfort and a sigh. Beneath the starlit canvas of a fading sky. In the quiet of the morning. A memory softly wakes. A gentle breeze of yesterday. Through my window it now breaks. I see your smile in sunlit haze. A whisper in the air. A feeling so profound. A love beyond compare. The world outside just melts away as moments drift and gleam. Lost in the echoes of a truth, a vivid waking dream. All these faded serenades, a longing in my soul. Sweet memories and endless maze making my spirit whole. Though time may turn the page, your presence lingers near. A gentle haunting melody wiping away each tear. I trace the lines of laughter. On pathways we once tried. Your silhouette against the sky. A blessing from our God. The scent of rain on summer nights. A story untold. A precious treasured photograph. Worth more than purest gold. The world outside just melts away as moments drift and gleam. Lost in the echoes of a truth, a vivid waking dream. All these faded serenades, a longing in my soul. Sweet memories and endless maze making my spirit whole. Though time may turn the page, your presence lingers near. A gentle haunting melody wiping away tears. And I know you're just beyond the veil, guiding loving light. These feelings are a sacred trail burning ever bright. A silent prayer, a hopeful sigh across the cosmic stream. You're always here though time flies by, my beautiful. Endless dream, all these faded serenades. A longing in my soul. Sweet memories and endless maze making my spirit whole. Though time may turn the page, your presence lingers near. A gentle haunting melody wiping away tears. Yeah, you linger near. So clear. Streetlights blur into the rain, a gentle hum. Empty coffee cups in a quiet, empty room. Scent of jasmine, a ghost upon the breeze. Drifting back to memories that bring me to my knees. Faded photographs behind a hazy pane. Whispering your name again and again. Stardust memories, they softly fall and gleam. Living in the echoes of a bittersweet dream. Every note a whisper, every shadow tells a tale. A love that lingers through every silent vein. That old melody plays low, a comfort in the dark. Laughter shared beneath the moon, leaving its gentle mark. A hand I held, a gaze that understood. Moments woven tight, forever in my blood. Time may spin its carousel, turning slow and deep. But these precious fragments, my heart will always keep. I know that paths diverge and seasons come and go. Yet in this quiet space, your presence starts to glow. A cosmic thread connecting across the lonely miles. I find you in the echoes and smile through misty trails. Oh, stardust memories, they softly fall and gleam. Living in the echoes of a bittersweet dream. Every note a whisper, every shadow tells a tale. A love that lingers through every silent vein. Just a whisper on the vinyl softly, gently fade. Memories like stardust through the passing days. Just a whisper on the vinyl softly, gently fade. Memories like stardust through the passing days. Morning mist still hangs low and gray. Just like the quiet in this space. Another sunrise slips away. Without your laughter, without your trace. Each shadow holds a memory. A whisper from a distant day. The city sleeps, a hushed refrain, but echoes stir inside my brain. Oh, these velvet reminiscences. Soft as a dream, bittersweet perfume. Drifting through the time's distances. Longing whispers in every room. A gentle ache, a silent plea. For what once was and used to be. for what once was and used to be. The old cafe, the autumn light. Your hand in mine, so warm and true. A photograph held to the night, reflecting moments shared with you. These fragments shimmer, then they fade. A silent promise softly made. The city sleeps, a hushed refrain, but echoes stir inside my brain. Oh, these velvet reminiscences, soft as a dream, bittersweet perfume, drifting through the time's distances. Longing whispers in every room. A gentle lay, a silent plea for what once was and used to be. Perhaps one day the pain will ease. This quiet yearning finds its peace. But for now, I'll hold them near. The memories that banish fear. A bittersweet embrace I keep as silent rivers run so deep. Oh, these velvet reminiscences, soft as a dream, bittersweet perfume, drifting through the time's distances. Longing whispers in every room. A gentle lay, a silent plea for what once was and used to be. Just a whisper. Just a whisper. A gentle hum begins. A dusty record spins. The quiet room embraces. Where memories dance begins. Midnight whispers drift through the windowpane so wide. A familiar chord progression. Nowhere left to hide your laughter. A soft echo call within the dusty air. I trace the lines of absence, a phantom touch, a silent prayer. Oh, the static on the vinyl plays our song on repeat. Every single memory, bittersweet and also need. You're the rhythm in my heartbeat, the melody I crave. Powerful recollection from the love we used to save. It's aching in my soul, a fire I can't contain. Just the resonance of us washing through me like the rain. Remember sunny mornings, coffee steaming, sky so bright. Sharing whispered secrets bathed in golden gentle light. The way you'd hum a tune just off key but always true. Now the silence amplifies every single thought of you. I walk these city streets where our old stories still reside. A vibrant ghost beside me, nowhere left for me to hide. Oh, the static on the vinyl plays our song on repeat. Every single memory, bittersweet and also need. You're the rhythm in my heartbeat, the melody I crave. Powerful recollection from the love we used to save. It's aching in my soul, a fire I can't contain. Just the resonance of us washing through me like the rain. Time may spin in circles, try to dim the vibrant glow. But deep within this quiet space, our connection starts to grow. It's more than just a memory, it's a force that pulls me through. A powerful unyielding truth forever tied to you. Oh, the static on the vinyl plays our song on repeat. Every single memory, bittersweet and also need. You're the rhythm in my heartbeat, the melody I crave. Powerful recollection from the love we used to save. It's aching in my soul, a fire I can't contain. Just the resonance of us washing through me like the rain. Washing through me like a rain. Oh, the resonance. The static always, always. Streetlights blur through the windowpane, a soft hazy glow. Dust moods dance in the amber light, a story I know. Then a faint melody drifts in, a familiar refrain, bringing back echoes of you through sun and too late. Oh, this amber memory lane where time gently sighs. Wrapped in a warm, bittersweet haze beneath starlit skies. Every whisper, every touch, a moment still bright. You linger here in my heart through the quietest night. That old jazz record spins low, a comfort I embrace. Your laughter echoes softly, a beautiful fading trace. The scent of rain on asphalt, a scene so clear. Wishing you were still close, wishing you were still here. Oh, this amber memory lane where time gently sighs. Wrapped in a warm, bittersweet haze beneath starlit skies. Every whisper, every touch, a moment still bright. You linger here in my heart through the quietest night. Though seasons may change and the days turn to gray. These fragments of light will forever hold sway. A precious collection, I hold it so tight. Guiding my spirit, a comforting light. Oh, this amber memory lane where time gently sighs. Wrapped in a warm, bittersweet haze beneath starlit skies. Every whisper, every touch, a moment still bright. You linger here in my heart through the quietest night. Just an echo in the silence, a gentle goodbye. My amber memory lane beneath the soft sky. Always you, always here. Just a dream passing by. Vinyl crackles, a sweet lullaby. Morning mist still hangs low and gray, just like the quiet in this space. Another sunrise slips away without your laughter, without your trace. Each shadow holds a memory, a whisper from a distant day. The city sleeps, a hushed refrain, but echoes stir inside my brain. Oh, these velvet reminiscences, soft as a dream, bittersweet perfume, drifting through the time's distances. Longing whispers in every room. A gentle lay, a silent plea for what once was and used to be. The old cafe, the autumn light. Your hand in mine, so warm and true. A photograph held to the night, reflecting moments shared with you. These fragments shimmer, then they fade. A silent promise softly made. The city sleeps, a hushed refrain, but echoes stir inside my brain. Oh, these velvet reminiscences, soft as a dream, bittersweet perfume, drifting through the time's distances. Longing whispers in every room. A gentle lay, a silent plea for what once was and used to be. Perhaps one day the pain will ease. This quiet yearning finds its peace. But for now, I'll hold them near. The memories that banish fear. A bittersweet embrace I keep as silent rivers run so deep. Oh, these velvet reminiscences, soft as a dream, bittersweet perfume, drifting through the time's distances. Longing whispers in every room. A gentle lay, a silent plea for what once was and used to be. Just a whisper. Twilight whispers through the pain, a quiet echo, soft as rain. Twilight whispers through the pain, a quiet echo, soft as rain. Your memory, a gentle hum before the coming of the sun. Still vivid in my mind's embrace, a tender smile, a fading trace. Oh, the lavender lullaby woven from a time gone by. A melody, a sweet refrain, whispering your name again. In every star, a guiding light, you bloom eternally in night. The scent of jasmine fills the air, recalling moments we would share. A gentle touch, a knowing glance, lost in a quiet timeless dance. The laughter lingers in the breeze among the rustling autumn trees. Oh, the lavender lullaby woven from a time gone by. A melody, a sweet refrain, whispering your name again. In every star, a guiding light, you bloom eternally in night. Oh, seasons turn and years may fly, this longing never says goodbye. A silent prayer, a hopeful plea to guard the space you left in me. A gentle ache, a sweet embrace, I find you in this hallowed tree. Oh, the lavender lullaby woven from a time gone by. A melody, a sweet refrain, whispering your name again. In every star, a guiding light, you bloom eternally in night. Forever etched, a tender dream. A timeless cherished quiet stream, my lavender lullaby.
Sunrise paints the windowpane, thought I heard your name again. A cozy hum, a quiet beat, puts your memory on repeat. Old photo in my hand, across the miles, I understand. This longing hums a quirky tune beneath the low fire moon. Yeah, it's a vibrant buzz and ache, for goodness sake. Oh, my heart's a turntable spinning free, lost in this sweet memory. A playful echo, strong and clear, wish you were right here. Yeah, love that groove, a powerful call, I miss you through it all. The coffee steams, the city wakes, a silly little thought it makes of inside jokes and easy grins, where do the good times begin? Each favorite song, a hidden cue, bringing every moment of you. This longing hums a quirky tune beneath the low fire moon. Yeah, it's a vibrant buzz and ache, for goodness sake. Oh, my heart's a turntable spinning free, lost in this sweet memory. A playful echo, strong and clear, wish you were right here. Yeah, love that groove, a powerful call, I miss you through it all. Some feelings never truly fade, a vibrant rhythm bravely played. It's not a sad soft whisper low, but an energetic joyful flow. Yeah, this connection truly profound, still spinning round and round. Oh, my heart's a turntable spinning free, lost in this sweet memory. A playful echo, strong and clear, wish you were right here. Love that groove, a powerful call, I miss you through it all. Still spinning, yeah, always in my mind.
Rain against the windowpane, a lullaby so low. Dust moods dance in sunbeams, secrets only shadows know. I trace a phantom outline on the empty space beside. A whisper of laughter where your presence used to ride. The scent of old worn paper, a story left untold. A feeling in the quiet as the autumn nights unfold. Oh, these velvet memories, soft and deep inside my mind. A beautiful lake, a longing for the past I left behind. In the hazy glow of twilight where the fading pictures gleam. You're a distant star, a cherished everlasting dream. Footsteps on the floorboards, a melody I knew. A gentle touch upon my arm, forever fresh and new. I scroll through mental snapshots, a smile, a shared glance. Lost within the moments in a bittersweet slow dance. The city lights are blurring, a canvas painted gray. But your essence shines brightly, guiding each day. Oh, these velvet memories, soft and deep inside my mind. A beautiful lake, a longing for the past I left behind. In the hazy glow of twilight where the fading pictures gleam. You're a distant star, a cherished everlasting dream. Though seasons turn and years may drift and pathways diverge far. Your echo lives within my soul, my guiding hopeful star. A tapestry woven with threads of silver and of gold. A story of our yesterdays that never will grow old. It's not a pain but comfort in the moments I recall. A quiet lingering magic standing strong against the fall. Oh, these velvet memories, soft and deep inside my mind. A beautiful lake, a longing for the past I left behind. In the hazy glow of twilight where the fading pictures gleam. You're a distant star, a cherished everlasting dream. Streetlights blur into the rain, a gentle hum. Empty coffee cups and a quiet empty room. Scent of jasmine, a ghost upon the breeze. Drifting back to memories that bring me to my knees. Faded photographs behind a hazy pane, whispering your name again and again. Oh, stardust memories, they softly fall and gleam. Living in the echoes of a bittersweet dream. Every note a whisper, every shadow tells a tale. A love that lingers through every silent vein. That old melody plays low, a comfort in the dark. Laughter shared beneath the moon, leaving its gentle mark. A hand I held, a gaze that understood. Moments woven tight, forever in my blood. Time may spin its carousel, turning slow and deep. But these precious fragments, my heart will always keep. I know that past diverges and seasons come and go. Yet in this quiet space, your presence starts to glow. Cosmic thread connecting across the lonely minds. I find you in the echoes and smile through misty trials. Oh, stardust memories, they softly fall and gleam. Living in the echoes of a bittersweet dream. Every note a whisper, every shadow tells a tale. A love that lingers through every silent affair. Just a whisper on the vinyl softly gently fades. Memories like stardust through the passing day. through the passing day